Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I moved out, I figured it was gonna be important.
Well, thank you.
And I've never seen.
I had to keep, I had to buy my tongue for two months. Well, we got seven, we think, and I'm like. She's telling us not to tell, so I can't say or.
So we had, well, I had, I, we kind of, she talked to somebody about it a little bit. So we had six, now I have seven because Mr. I have a male teacher whose wife is pregnant.
Well, one time I'm just kind of, you know, and you look over and I'm like, and I look away and like, I can't look at people's mouth. But I don't know if she's one of your seven or not.
All right, President, it's time.
She typed, she emailed me and was like, how about you just go on this list?
I told her, I don't think they're getting on the list.
I said, thanks for. I thought it was.
It was supposed to be yesterday, but they, it didn't come back from the states, I mean, from Lily's in Indy. So there's been no answer yet. Maybe by the end of the week. But the foundation should have all let us know because our students are very on edge.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Six oh, six ball even. Um, we will start with a word of prayer. If you'd like to join us, please do. If not, please step out.
Let's break.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the, uh, the break in the weather. Um, just be with the, the facilities team here to just, uh, catch up with everything, um, with the cold and the snow last week and the cold coming this week. Um, just, uh, be a positive influence for the kids as we end up the semester. I know, uh, down here, they're doing testing and down in elementary, they're having lots of fun. So just be with the kids and let them enjoy the last, last few weeks of school. Uh, be with us as we make decisions for what's best for the students and the community here. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
What do you lead to the United States of America and to the Republican for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on the meeting, co-meeting order, and then the approval of the agenda. Any additions?
Or additions or corrections?
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
You make the motion.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three oh two absent.
So President, I do have a quick bear positive before the comments for patrons. Um, just want to recognize a lot of groups, um, students, uh, staff and faculty, community that have helped out with, uh, a lot of the, um, activities going on this time of year to collect, uh, for those less fortunate. Um, the Rex Sandberg Memorial Food Drive, Mike Gordon heads that up each year, and Mike is such a good, great individual, does so much for Monroe Central. Um, he reaches out each year to ask for help, and I know a lot of students, said staff, community, um, support that. Obviously, Mr. Hall has done the Larry Hall Christmas, and the Angel Tree down in the elementary for, I don't know, sixty years plus. It's amazing. Um, he is not, it's not doing great. He just got out of the emergency room a couple days ago at the hospital, so. But I know he was in the building, like, yesterday I saw him. So he plans on doing that again. And then, of course, this Saturday is the Randolph County Secret Families, which, uh, Mr. Wagner, we have a lot of locals that participate in that throughout the county. Um, so we'll have groups that will help wrap and shop and deliver trees and deliver presents and stuff. So lots of good things going on, a lot of people contributing, and I just want to recognize those folks. I think that's a, a great positive for our community and uh, definitely our school corporation. So I'm sure I missed other groups that are doing things, but those are three big ones and, and Monroe Central and Randolph County. So thank you to those folks.
All right, now we move to comments from patrons. Um, if you have a comment, please. Limit it to three minutes. Go to the podium, state your name and address.
I don't have any comment, but three minutes would be very difficult.
I would not watch you. I would. Specifically. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Um, let's see here. I don't think there are any, no, I think we're good on all those. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I would say we're pretty excited about getting him to do track. Uh, he has a lot of expertise in that area, uh, kind of holding off. Um, but, uh, Mr. Beach, they will convince him here, and he's going to do tracks. And we'll free up our athletic director to be just the athletic director in spring, which I know he's excited about. I think we are as well, so. Uh, I think that's going to be a great hire. So excited to get Sean as our track coach. The rest of those, we still plan to read it.
I will make the motion to, uh, that the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Yeah, on the admin office director, contract extensions, the folks we're talking about here are, um, Ms. Cheeseman, treasurer, the, uh, Ms. Butterfield, the payroll, um, our tech director, Mr. Headland, our assistant tech director, Craig Cantrell, operations director, I don't, you heard it before meetings, he's not retiring. So operations director and, uh, transportation, David Hoser. What we'd like to do with those folks, I mean, obviously, they, they are doing a great job. I just like to give them the security of knowing that you have a contract. They're not teachers, they're not necessarily admin principals, they're not some licensed folks, but these are folks who are boarding, they're, they're sour folks. Um, but it just gives them some assurance that I have a contract for the year. The board has that much faith in me to give them a contract extension. So I'm asking that those people, their contracts be extended through the end of next year. That's what those are.
Okay, entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion to extend.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Certified staff appointments. Uh, I'll make just a couple comments because we are really, obviously, bare bones tonight. Um, Mr. Milton's, uh, did have a basketball game that he was playing on attending tonight at Frankton, but his brother had a pretty serious heart attack overnight. So he left today, this morning, so he is not here. Ms. Bly and Ms. Hobbs are at the kindergarten tee, is that what we're calling that? Kindergarten, sorry, didn't mean to give any, necessarily.
Like a musical.
They are at the tee tonight, so, um, they're down there, and then Mr. Headland had their commitment. So we'll start, we're short-staffed on the administration side, but I can cover most of these, uh, appointments. Um, we have several maternity leaves, which we've talked about in the spring at the elementary. Um, Ms. Bly would like to recommend Sean Gray for one of those maternity leaves. And, uh, Missy Sims, who did her student teaching, or in the process of getting that all finished up for another one. Those would both be fifth grade leaves. It would both be in the spring. She is very excited about both of those individuals because Sean is a licensed teacher, and Missy, I believe, will be if she's not already.
She got it today.
That's awesome. What that means is those people will be able to administer Ireland in spring. And we will have to go out, try to find a teacher to come in and do those tests. So two great, great individuals to cover some maternity leaves for us. So excited to get both.
You guys get to take those together.
Yes.
I will make the motion to accept the certified staff appointments.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
On classified staff appointments, uh, Katie Millholland has completed all her requirements for her CDL. And she's seen over this. Yes, they're, they're working on, yes. She pulled, I was out there last week, waving her in, but yeah, so excited to get Katie, um. Yeah, she's, she's going to be a great admission as a bus driver. And, um, yeah, she, she started driving. She, I talked to her, uh, yesterday. So ran into her, and, um, she's fully licensed driving, so. Glad to get her. And then, uh, Brittany Shipman, she's already started for us. This would be in the life skills room. This would be with Wendy Anderson. Um, Brittany's in there as a full-time repair professional. Like to get those folks hired on the classified staff.
Perfect. We'll take these together as well. I'm entertaining a motion for that.
I'm making motion for the classified appointments.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Okay, so it's December, and, you know, every December, as you get into operations, um, try to see where you're at with your appropriation, what we have left. Um, we're doing quite well this year, uh, on the operations side. So we're trying to take care of a few things that, you know, are, are kind of wants, needs. But obviously, you don't have the appropriation there. You're not gonna, you're not gonna get them at the end of the year. I talked to Ron about, hey, what's, what's, what's a, what's one of your biggest needs right now? And he said, you know, we really need to replace one of our snowplows. So we have a recommendation from Right Way. I'll let Ron kind of talk about this a little bit. But, uh, I had no idea it would cost that much to replace one snowplow. But it does not come with the truck included. But, um, Ron, you want to talk about it? I, I know I got a couple of questions about, you know, if we already, or if we were adding this to a truck that already had a plow, that we need some of the stuff that's already there. So we're, well, kind of switch gears. I think I'm gonna put it on the newer truck. That way I have four plows available.
My oldest plow's an O nine, and we're starting to get into cylinders and things that we're repairing on. So with the Ford truck, it'll make it a lot easier when I get a five-inch snow, that I can get it off in three hours or ten. And I've got a drawn location.
So right now, we have three, three plows. This is replacing one.
Well, I was gonna put it on duck truck. I think I'm gonna put it on the new truck and see how long I can get by.
You're all keep. I know one of the questions was, what are we gonna do with the old plow? We're gonna recycle it? Are we gonna try to trade it in? Doesn't sound like we need to worry about that.
After that last five-inch snow, I thought, boy, it'd be so much easier to put it, because I got the drawing. I said the trunk and plow.
So I have any questions on the snowplow? This would be Right Way. Total plow, install it, I mean, everything, eleven, five, two, seven, one thousand five twenty-seven.
Okay, I will make the motion to accept the snowplow purchase.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry. Motion carries three zero two absent.
Okay, next up, this is actually not from operations. This would be a recommendation, kind of as we wind down on Project Twenty Four. This was mainly the solar. Obviously, you got the hall gym room, some other items there, but in that, in that budget, we had for, um, bus replacement radios. So we kind of waited to the end to see if we would have enough. This was not top priority, a priority, but um, we're doing well on that project. We've got some money left over. Brent's done a really good job on the technology side of things. So we'd actually budgeted about fifty thousand for this, and he's got it down to about thirty-five. Again, this is all out of the end of Project Twenty Four money. These are the Motorola radios that would go in all of our buses. All of our buses right now run analog, and I wish Brent was here because he'd explain a lot better, but all our buses run analog. While all of our administrators have newer radios that would go digital, but we have not switched over to digital because we'd not be able to talk to the buses until they hit to digital, if that makes sense. So this would, they got all the old radios and the buses, we would get digital, we'll be able to switch the admin to digital. In addition, this recommendation is, um, providing the radios for each classroom pod. So every pod at the elementary, as well as certain areas of this building, will have a set of radios in case of an emergency. If you're going out to recess, those kind of things. We've talked about that for years, but we've never been able to provide enough radios to do that. Again, they'll all talk to each other, and what was also kind of nice about this is, um, this will not go out and people will not pick up. This is all going to be encrypted. So there will not be any computer, anybody out there being able to listen in on all the conversations that are going on between bus drivers and admin and so on. So I hope that makes sense. Um, that's what the, the Motorola bus replacement radio, again, we talked about this three years ago when we started planning for that project. This is just kind of the tail end of it, like, obviously trying to spin down balance when you go into a new project. That's what the recommendation is on the bus radios.
Can I entertain a motion to accept radios?
So.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Okay, so we've had this next one on the, uh, oh, we do this as part of the budget process. We do the capital project plans. We have to include any major purposes and uh, we've talked about replacing a car, the corporation car, for a couple of years now, and we just cannot, you know, have the appropriation to do it. And we've been able to get by with it. But this is the Malibu that sits out in front of the corporation, um, building. Um, that car's only got about seventy-five thousand miles on it, but it just, it gets driven, you know, a lot, almost, about every day, somebody's in it. So who's driving it? Well, I drove it this morning through a meeting with Caleb and Brent down at Randolph Southern, Anne drives it. Beth has to run and get something at the dollar store. She gets in it. I mean, we don't, we will pay mileage to people if they're using their own vehicle, but we, we tell them they need to use a corporation vehicle if a corporation vehicle is available. First option is always that. So, um, this is used by the principals. If they're going to a meeting, it's used by an athletic director on a Friday night, going to a football game, if he's not driving a bus. I mean, it's, it's used, but I tell you, she does the schedule on this, and our keeps up with it. So, um, and talking to all those people, like, okay, we want to replace this. Um, the thought was, well, we want to get, obviously, something that's safe, safe to drive, and we'd love to get something that's a little easier to get in and out. Malibu sits low. I enjoy driving it, actually, but, because I've got a truck, you know, it's a little different being a little car, but that was kind of the talk. So we, we've looked at some vehicles. I don't have a recommendation tonight on a vehicle. I mean, it's just too hard to do that. They go with the quick used cars. But I put some ideas in your packet. Um, we're looking at possibly a traverse. And again, we're not looking at that necessarily to, to halt four or five or six or eight people. I mean, this is mainly a one, two, three person, four at the most that would be traveling in this. We're not transporting kids in this. Um, but we'd like to do that. We still have the corporation van, um, and that van is going to need to be replaced soon. Um, we use that all last year, every day, transporting McKinney Vento kids, every day.
Very good.
Um, you guys know, because you ride in that van twice a year down to Hagerstown, you kind of know what that's like. But we're gonna need to get rid of that. That, this is not to replace that. We're, we're still need that vehicle. And then obviously, we have the SRO vehicle, um, and that is, that vehicle is not in great shape, but we're gonna get by with that hopefully for a little while longer. We really need to, that vehicle needs to be driven off campus more often. It is, what's, what's tearing that thing up is it's giving, it's not going more than a mile a day. I mean, literally, he'll drive it up here to the high school maybe once or twice a day, and that's it. That's the only miles it gets. It needs to go to Muncie once a week or something, just because we've had so many issues with that, but. Um, and then obviously, we have, you know, the white buses, if we're taking a, a big large staff somewhere or a number of staff, but just wanted to give you an idea of what, what we're talking about when we say, you know, vehicles and vehicle replacements. What we would like to do, and again, this may not get done, I mean, I, I hope it does, but we would like to just get a number. What, 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 what do I have permission to go out and spend hopefully on a traverse, something in that area? What were the other vehicles? And you mentioned one, this doesn't. Just, just because we're working really hard on this one. I can't remember what else. I know all my vehicle types, but something in that kind of a class. Um, we're looking at here down at Noblesville, but, you know, we'll, we'll shop around. But I just need a number that I can go out and say, all right, this is what I know I can get, get a good deal, try to see if we can get a number on that Malibu, trade it in, and make it happen. So I think my recommendation, I mean, most of the ones that we were looking at, uh, I mean, twenty fours, twenty fives, a lot of them must be rental cars. A lot of these have low mileage, but newer vehicles, but they are, but they are used. I mean, we're looking in, we're from thirty to thirty-five, is probably what we're looking at without the trade-in, so. Can you, I don't even remember what I asked. Thirty-seven five, I think it was thirty-seven five. To compromise, yeah, the recommended, uh, not to exceed thirty-seven five. Obviously, there wouldn't be any tax, so. Just need to have an idea. We need to get a vehicle purchased, and I don't have one to bring to you. Just too hard to do that. We've done that before. That's, Ron, Ron knows the truck by the truck. You know, they'll go before I can get to a board meeting, get it. Or we could, I mean, if you would like for me to do that, I mean, we can put money down. We've done that before too on vehicles. But, um, we can say, if you'll give me permission to put so much money down on something until I get back to a board meeting with a specific vehicle, you know, here's the number of miles this is the year. If you'd rather we do it that way, we could do it. Your call.
I appreciate you answering my questions and emailing that today. Um, bye. Uh, I've ridden in the van, and that's my first question is, I assume this is to replace the van because it is old, and if it's needed more on the Malibu than it is the van, I am totally on board. We, if you, you say it's worse than the van is, we probably.
You've driven the Malibu, it's.
It's weird, like, when you stop, all this water gush is, like, you don't know where it's coming from. I don't know. I feel like, yeah.
It's.
It's.
It's got some problems.
It's scary, a little bit.
It's. Dave does a great job, and he's got it serviced. He says it's safe, but it's a.
You're trying to trade this in. That vehicle's fine.
It's great.
Absolutely. Some great condition. I don't have a problem doing not to exceed thirty-seven five.
So we're saying thirty-seven five after the trade-in, or what are we gonna do with that? We're gonna sell it off?
I have no idea what we can get for that. I don't see us going nearly that high. I'm just, I, I put some cushion there in case I had to, but I mean, I'm hoping to keep this under thirty, to be honest with you, after the trade-in, but. I don't, also, I want to get a vehicle flying. Hey, that's, that's exactly what we want. It's great, and it'd be.
Do we also, do we do it also as allowing a trade-in of a vehicle without board approval right now? That would make it easier for you, I imagine.
Yep. I think that's part of the motion. That'd be great. With or without trading.
We, we. I'll make the motion, um, with the change that with or without the trade-in, so, um, I, I would allow molten discretion on the amount of trade-in, whether you'd like to accept it or not.
For thirty-seven five?
Yeah. Not including the trade-in. Bring down with the trade-in.
Yep.
Yeah. If that makes sense for you.
Well, second.
Right.
The motion has been made to accept thirty-seven five less the trade-in with Mr. Moulton's discretion on the trade-in value. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero, three zero, two absent.
Yeah, and I'll keep, I'll keep you informed. Even, like I said, this may not happen. We may not get this done for the end of the year. We're hoping to. Um, and then obviously, if we do make a purchase between now and January, I'll report everything out in January and November, but that just gives me a little leeway to go shopping, and I know what, what we can do, need to do. Appreciate that. I know that people that drive that every day, well, Rob drives two every day. We're out twice a, twice a week, maybe?
Yep.
Okay, uh, next item, permission to pay any unpaid claims. Don't anticipate this, but with this being the last what we anticipate, what we hope will be our last regular reading of the year. Um, this would allow just, if something were to come in late, um, to pay it, um, prior to that January meeting. So again, this is something we typically do at the end of each year every year. Get your permission for this.
I will make the motion to accept the permission to pay unclaimed, unpaid, unpaid claims prior to the end of the year.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Okay, so twenty-six monthly transfer from education to operations. Um, you guys do this every year. Um, I can, I can tell you, we were, you know, we're, we're gonna be within, you know, I don't want to probably two to three thousand where for this year's transfer. So it's a lot of times I'll come back and ask for more, like, transfer another ten thousand, I think was what we did last year, something like that. Um, and it's, it's so little of an amount that we're not, we hit our mark. We hit it just about right last year. So not asking for transfer, you know, either direction, uh, for this year. Going into twenty-six, though, we would like to, to plan one fifteen, hundred fifteen thousand, not to exceed a hundred fifteen thousand each month. Just to give you an idea where we were, we, we're, right now, we're transferring a hundred twelve each month. So jumping up to one fifteen, uh, obviously, we're receiving a little more in education, so it doesn't affect, doesn't kick us over that fifteen percent. Again, this is just to help offset those costs that used to be paid out of the old education fund. And, but now that we, the inflation funds around, this helps offset any operations deficit, so. It should keep us a hundred fifteen percent.
Our education fund is typically pretty low in November, and it is right now. But it's a little bit lower right now than it typically is in November.
To my ops or?
No, it's the education fund, I'm pretty sure, down twenty-three thousand. Maybe it was operations, like, maybe it was operations. Okay, I was looking wrong. Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
It was, I'll have to drive, I'll give it up twenty-one.
So this will allow us come December next year, if, you know, by, by saying not to exceed, if we need to reduce this, then we will. We'll only transfer fifty thousand next December. If, if we get to a point where, like, we know we're gonna be over it. Obviously, if we really miss it and we need to transfer more, or could transfer more, we'll talk about that December. But that's the way we wrote the resolution for this year. I think one fifteen is, again, this is all gonna be determined on what our February count is, what our next year's October count is. We'll all, we'll weigh off on counts for just that numbers. One fifteens, what we're looking at.
Okay, I will make the motion to accept the, uh, transfer resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Neola Policy, second reading. Lots of policy. Volume thirty-seven, number two, special update, block thirty-eight, number one, and the non-discrimination policies. Unless there's any other questions on that, if I'd like to get those approved, then we will move on.
We'll entertain a motion for that acceptance.
I'll make the motion to accept, Neil. What's it?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero two absent.
Okay, for my report tonight, um, tag, just to give you an update, last Friday, the teacher applications were due for tag. Oh, we got sixteen, maybe seventeen, which is great. I thank each and every one of those teachers for taking the time to apply for this. Um, at the lowest mark amount, which is thirty-five hundred, um, I think the most we could give is eleven. So if only the lowest tier, thirty-five hundred, um, you know, we're gonna tell probably six people, sorry, you don't get any, so. Um, and they know that. We've talked about that. That's just the, that's the, that's where we're at. That's what the statute says. So we're in the process, myself, the admin team, we're gonna talk about Friday, our cap meeting. We're gonna go through and look at all sixteen, seventeen of those applications. We're gonna verify the information is correct. Then we'll extract any inform, personal information from those. And then in first part of January, we're gonna swap those with Liberty Perry. And they'll judge those, rank those based upon a rubric that is yet to be written, but we'll create one. And then, uh, at the end, by the end of January, we're gonna have to submit to the state, here are the eleven or so names that we would like to receive, particularly of the site, so. That's, that's the update on that, or do you have any questions on it?
No, I know there's been a lot of social media on it, and I just.
Just here, but in general.
In general, and it is, that's what everybody know, it is, it is a statewide thing, not a Monroe Central thing, but it is twenty percent of teachers, which is in any other industry. The, the ones who get the top bonuses are the top twenty percent. So it completely lines up with the normal industry to incentivize people to be the best in their classroom. And I know it's, it's education, not competition, it's not any kind of, I get that, but just, just so that people can align with their own worlds of business-wise, it's not uncommon in other lines of business, something like this.
Yep. And just glancing at the applications, I mean, we have, we have some people that just excel. I mean, they really have, and they stuck themselves out there. I'm, I'm proud that they applied for this, going that, they may not get it, I mean, but. I'm proud that they applied for this, going that, they may not get it, I mean, but.
Good work. And the ones who get it are gonna get a lot more than they typically would have.
Yes, they are, a lot more. All right, bus sale, there's, there's your number. We did sell a bus, twenty five hundred dollars. Dude, I mean, that's, that's better than nothing. It's a bus that we could not use, we'd not be able to drive it with the fuel tank the way it was. It was gonna cost a lot more than that to fix it, so um, it is what it is, the best one, that's what we got on the gov deal site, so. It's twenty five hundred dollars more than we had. What are you laughing about?
I'm hoping to see it at Anderson Speedway. Got it, but I'm hoping they did. Down there on the back and I was like, what corporation is that?
That's so funny.
Union City bought one, um, and they turned it into the Polar Express for the light display out front.
I saw that further a prey.
So that's better than the fifteen hundred they offered us in trade a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Not much, but.
New bus should be here in January. We'll, we'll let you know as soon as it shows up. Should have a bus arriving first of the year. Um, solar tax credit, I just put a, a, a quick email in your packet to the board, just reminded the board that. We are on the process of applying for a tax credit from the federal government um, on the solar project and um, the financial consultant that we're working with said all preliminary work for your track, tax credit has been completed. We are now on hold until the IRS um, releases twenty five tax forms. Um, those are usually left or released up in uh, early February. So they have the information. And once they file that, uh, we should see some kind of tax return. Hopefully at some point twenty six. Uh, and that will be, it should be a, a large amount of money, can't tell you what. Um, but I, we have an idea, it's gonna be roughly about a quarter, point five percent of that overall project, so. We'll see where that comes in. Obviously, that's exciting. That money can be spent or placed in whatever fund the board chooses. So when, when we know the amount, then we'll start, start planning where you wanna put it, how you wanna spend it. Till then, probably all of us till we know exactly the math. Um, ready, yeah, ready two point oh. I'll let Ann talk about this. I don't wanna say anything I'm not supposed to, but just, just so everybody knows, Mrs. Taylor's worked hard on, on a grant, um, here through the uh, Randolph County Economic Development, other groups that she'll talk about. We informed the board, just so you would not be in the dark about what she was writing the grant for. That's a, that's child care. Uh, here and the lack of it in Randolph County and in central Indiana. She's worked extremely hard on the grant, put up a great grant proposal together. Had some help, very little from me, very little from me. I did read through it. We talked about it a couple of times. She got a lot of help from Renee Hady, I know, Sierra Hobbs.
She helped me a lot too.
Yeah, Sierra helped a lot. So good work for her and I'll let you talk about it. And then a couple of things I wanna say to the board.
Okay, I'm here in case I say anything wrong or anything like that, but. I've always heard of ready money, but we've never applied for any money. Um, even when um, Baker worked there, he was like, you guys should apply for money and just something that never really came on our radar to actually do. And again, I've heard the other schools getting it, like, okay, we should, you know. And I was approached that we should go for this because there is a spot for early childhood. And that's where we're at. Renee's built this program that's doing amazing, doing great. And I think everybody in here knows that we're having an influx of babies next year. So right now we have seven infants that will, are not born yet, none of them are, that will be here by next year. So um, six of our female teachers and then one of our male teachers' wife is having a baby and we already take care of all their older children. All except one. So um, we also, so we've always been like just our staff daycare and we are looking at expanding to do community daycare. So when we did our little survey up just to our community, like, hey, would you use this? We got lots of positive. Uh, we got a lot of like, I wish that was around when my kids were through school, like I would use this. Um, and we're building our own workforce. So we're like, okay, let's, let's see what we can make happen. And Ashley's helped too. Well, we applied for six hundred, we applied for seven hundred fifty thousand. We got six hundred and fifty thousand, so. I can't say that, I mean, to me it's like almost the same. But I look at what we did with the ninety thousand that we got and what we made into that. So I know, like, we can do this even whatever we get. It is a matching grant, so it's really one point three um, that we are gonna do to expand to community daycare. Um, we do have one community's child already that we have and we'll be picking up a second one in January. So already kinda opening a little bit. But knowing that our staff right now is what we're looking at and having more infants than we know what to do with next year, like, we already know we need another room. But to do it for the community, we're gonna need more space. So um, the grant was wrote, we're not building, that's not our plan, because we do have open space. Uh, we just gotta decide what we're shuff, how we're shuffling stuff around to accommodate. Will it be up here or will it be at the elementary? So definitely need to get together and get that figured out so we can start planning. Um, but our goal is to have six classrooms total. Right now we have two. And to have six total that we can use and for daycare. And it's, I mean, it's early learning, it's not daycare. Those kids are doing so much and being in there today um, for a few hours myself, like, they've learned so much. They're, they like wanted to sit down and read with, like, they're learning other people and other adults coming in. And just learning colors and counting and everything. So our plan is to open, have a total of six areas. We have a lot to do. Um, we have a lot to do as us, as a school board. We also have a lot to do as the program because our hours won't be seven thirty to four anymore. We're gonna have to accommodate that. We can't be closed on to our delay days. We can't be closed on snow days. Like, these people still have to go to work. So we have a lot of things for ourselves to learn. Um, but I know expanding next year even to another room, like, our first thing is going to our seven seniors that are graduating and being like, hey, are you going to Boston? You go to Ivy Tech, who wants to stay back and continue working here at Monroe Central, which I hear they do. So we're excited. We got a lot of work to do.
Can I say something? Is that okay?
I'm good with that.
So Randolph County, if all of our providers, licensed providers were at maximum capacity, could only serve um, a little under twenty one percent of our zero to five population in the county. Um, when this opens, uh, Monroe Central will be one of two licensed childcare providers. Um, so the only other one is the YMCA. Um, and so this is a huge, huge, huge win for our county, for our community. Um, you know, we, we think of our, our area right here as Parker and Farmland, but we have a large population of people that drive to Muncie, drive to Delaware County to work and they're all driving down thirty two. Um, so this is a huge victory. Anne has worked really hard. She's worked with the publishing um, a lot and um, for our community, for our county, um, that, that twenty, twenty one percent is regionally the lowest. Um, and our schools have really stepped into a space to try to provide that, but of that twenty one percent, the vast majority of it is pre-K only. So those are our four and five olds. So this gives our families, look at the zero to three population. Access to childcare that, that they just don't have. They just don't have it, let alone whether or not they can afford it. Um, and so that survey that Anne put out, um, that, that said a lot because uh, being able to afford childcare right now is an obstacle, is a barrier. But by the time this is fully open, C C D F vouchers will be, the waitlist will in some way, shape or form be lifted. Um, and so this is a huge win, um, for, for our entire county, for our entire community. So um, sorry, very little down. We're excited, yeah.
Is this our second, third year with the preschool or the daycare?
Second year.
This is our second year. The grant was only for one year and then we're on our second year.
Yep.
Do we, in the first year, was hanging, did any of the students move across the hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, like into the pre-K.
Yeah, yeah. And we're sending three year olds over to pre-K. Like, as soon as they turn three, they're eligible to go Tuesday, Thursday mornings. And we have one that started today. We sent a three year old today and then we have one starting in January and we have one starting in February. So as soon as they hit three, we, I sent out an email and I recommend to our parents, hey, it's just a small, extra little money and we'll, we won't charge you, but they will for those times. So. The goal is, like, they leave our room at three for a half day, two days a week, and then at four they go in the afternoons and then at five they hit kindergarten, you know, like, the goal is that they progressively move through preschool and then stay with us through kindergarten.
The goal is they go to kindergarten.
Right. The goal is they stay at kindergarten. And we do have one that's a Muncie district and dad already said, he goes, oh, she's coming here. She's coming here.
And I already told you guys, I know I told um, Adrian, but at one point in time, Charlotte was not bringing her kids to Monroe Central. They live in the Salma district. She was gonna send her kids to Salma and she's like, no, Kipton will come here. Like, I walk in now and the preschool teachers are like, hi, like, he knows them, they know him. Like, like, it's just, they bond so conveniently until they come over to cover. Been a long day.
Uh, and look, and a little bit of good news, this money was supposed to go to Winchester originally.
All of this, wait, all of it was supposed to go to.
I think it's even better, right?
Well, I've answered that. I was representing the whole county.
You did, you do, you do.
But uh, years ago, we looked at daycare, back when Dr. Long was here, because where the kids go to daycare is where they will go to school, period. Parents, especially if that one, one child, they're not gonna run a kid to Selma and one, run one to Monroe Central. They're gonna drop them both. It's simple math.
We talked about that. Yeah, and I'm, I'm excited about this and I was one of the early, I was one of the early naysayers, as I will be the first to say. Now.
You didn't make me cry, I made you cry.
I can tell you, I still believe in. I do not believe.
You did.
In public schools taking over. We are also in a shortage. We are in a desert of grocery stores. It doesn't mean that we need to open our store up to, school up to be a grocery store. We have no grocery stores around here though. But we don't need to be a grocery store. Just like Mr. Shaper said. To me, I look at this as an opportunity to get those kids in the door. And this is a lot of other things that we're looking at as a board. We're looking at as, hey, what makes sense to be able to sell? What makes, we, we are a sales organization. We are selling these kids to come here. What can we do to bring more kids in and what can we not do to waste money on things that don't benefit our community and our kids?
And I think with that too, the early childhood program has really helped kids decide what pathway they wanna go into and what age group they wanna go into. Like, do I really like the littles? Do I really like the preschoolers? Do I really like the kindergarteners? And that's gonna help them save money and time in college if they know kind of where they'd like to go already.
I just think we need to be careful and weighted appropriately and make sure that we have things in the right areas and everything else. And, and the vouchers and we've, you know, we've talked about the vouchers and what it takes at voucher. If we moved up here, would we meet the regulations of the voucher? Would we have the bathrooms? Would we have, so all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, those, those are. Like, you're getting into an area that we know we're gonna have.
Right.
It's gonna take a lot of time. But before we even go there, I think we have to, I, I think back to your point. And I think we have to make sure that this is philosophically what we wanna do. I think we're already down that road, obviously. But we need to make sure that, and when I say we, the, the board needs to make sure you're behind this. I don't wanna get into something and then you start getting questioned, especially by board, like, why? Is this something you're behind? Like I said, we're, we're already well into this. And it's multifast, it's not just, I mean, all of these things are important. But to your point, Mr. Co, I mean, it's not just that we're providing a service for our community, which is huge. Okay, but it, it's also a pathway for our students.
Yes.
And then, okay, um, it's obviously a direct pipeline to Mr. Shaver's point of these kids will hopefully start here and hopefully walk across the stage here in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years. Which is huge for us, from a financial standpoint. I've shown you what one child can do over a fifteen year period financially for us. Just one child, the amount of money, the difference that is in those fifteen years is incredible. So that, that part, and then the other part that we don't talk enough about, I don't think is, and I know this is not everybody and this is a perk. But it is, it's, it's keeping quality staff members here that I'm afraid we won't keep if we don't provide childcare. So I, I think, and I'm sure there are other things, but it's not just, hey, we're doing that for this reason. I think there are a lot of, I think, a lot of reasons why this thing can happen. But to your point, I mean, right, from a funding standpoint, if you just purely black and white it, you know, we've got to make sure this works. And it can, it can work. Um, Anne is running that thing right now, just so you know. I talked to Jessica about this today. The, the, the daycare, not, I'm not talking about Cub Cat and preschool, but the daycare is completely separate from the education fund. Okay, there's no payroll coming out of that from education. I mean, obviously utilities, okay, yes, we're paying. We're not separating out utilities, but they buy their own supplies, but they pay their own staff. Obviously, the money that's coming in is going into that fund. But right now, it is supporting itself, it is, all right? And that's gonna be, I mean, I know I'm gonna get that question. I got that question when we started preschool, you know that, okay? And we could show that preschool, beyond whether or not they stay here and we're getting ed, we know that. But is it sustaining? It's, it's, right now it is.
It's not my goal. If it was my goal, we never would have approved to build a three million dollar building there, because it will never pay for itself. I just, I know we'll make that clear. Every time I hear that it's, it's sustaining itself, it's not. It is far in debt. We have completely built it and, and it will never pay for itself. And that's not the intention. It's not to pay for itself. I don't care if we lose my money on, honestly. The intention is that we can get these kids better educated from an early start and keep them here in our school.
That, it's a choice. I mean, it's just. And let me tell you, there's gonna be a lot of money thrown at it. Economic development, number one, at the state, county level, daycare.
At the national.
At the national. Bottom line is, if we can't find somewhere for these little guys to go, mom or dad have to stay home. It's a massive economic engine. You'll also see the benefit from housing. Higher end housing will come if there's daycare to be offered. But I agree, it, it's, you're still the state. But unfortunately, daycare has to be run by the state today.
And the childcare grants that we are seeing are all for capacity building. They are not for sustainability. They are all for capacity building and that's probably going to be the trend for quite some time, I think.
Good job, Mrs. Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Shaper, for your leadership and appreciate your support. Monroe Central always, obviously, Ashley Renee, thank you. I know, I know you guys are both gonna be here tonight, but kudos to you guys. It's, it's, this is a good thing. Now, obviously, it's gonna create some, I don't call it problems, but it's gonna create whatever challenges. These are all, I don't want you to come across as, um, it's, it's gonna be a lot of decision making. Obviously, a lot of visioning the board's gonna have to do, along with our community on some things. This is, like Anne said, we, we're not, I, I wanted to be really clear when she went this application. I don't want you to get in your head exactly like this room's gonna be that, this. Those, those are things that we're gonna have to figure out. And we can't, we can, but we had to first find out, are we gonna get it? Okay, and is this gonna work? Now we can start getting into some particulars. And one of the big, and before we get even much further than that, that's my, my January work session. You guys figure out how you're gonna match this, okay? Six hundred fifty thousand dollars is awesome. But it's a one to one match. And again, we haven't got a reward letter, so I don't wanna get too far ahead. I wanna.
Early February, we're supposed to find out how much we get from the solar.
Trust me, Anne's already, I've already mentioned that during, I saw her eyes just light up and I said that. But, you know, whether you use that or not. I wanna see that reward, aw, award letter. I wanna make sure that we understand exactly what the match can go toward, you know? I mean, Anne's written a great, written a great proposal, but, but if, if we can use our match and what she said in the proposal, no problem. But if it's very prescriptive, then we may have to think about how we're going to use this match money. Then obviously you gotta go out, find out where, whether it's solar, whether it's outside donors, which looked at, uh, potentially other things. I mean, you, this is not something, but you know this, this is not something you just say, oh, we'll write it out operations. I mean, that's, that's a fourth of your operations budget for the year right there. You can't, can't do that. But we'll figure it out, whether it's another, another project. Those are all things that, once we know now, that we've got this, now, now you need to take next step, start planning for. So with that, um, I think it's gonna be important, in addition to your January meeting, that we have a, a word and, and it's gonna have to be separate from a regular meeting. It's gonna have to be on a night, possibly even Saturday morning. I've done those before. Really have a, a, a sit down, uh, and really plan out where you wanna go, not just with this. But if you want to do another project, what would that look like? And it's critical that the timing of our next project is also something you wanna wanna consider. And that is due to the closing of the new school operation. You know that right now. Know that right now, uh, anything you do immediately right now is going to be. The debt is gonna come from just the taxpayers, the current three townships, Monroe Central, for our creation. To take on debt, um, you know, in the future, and to include Union School Corporation or Union Township. Then it's gonna probably have to be a little later down the road, so those are all things that we're gonna have to get answered, um, and figured out, but. Good problems, good things, and we're excited still, Anne, thank you, appreciate you, good job on that. What other questions you have for me? I think we did have an executive session planned for tonight, but due to a couple of board members unable to attend. I was asked by Mr. Morris, the president, to schedule, or go ahead and advertise an executive session for next Tuesday at seven. You guys can talk whether or not you can make that, but he would ask me to go ahead and announce that, get that advertised. Um, and there may be no exec tonight, so. Ron, Anne, you got anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you, Brad. I was gonna say, it's awesome, and Mrs. Haney, I know she's had a lot to do with it from the get-go, and the excitement that you have, and this whole program, and. It does concern me a little bit about a hundred thousand not being a big deal, well, you know, I may have to talk to your husband about that, but.
Throw that.
Concerns me a bit. I mean, plus or minus a hundred thousand.
They're big time.
Please, cause I'm so stunned, we'll turn it out.
But just the, just the drive with everybody, I mean, this whole group had something to do with it, not us, and I, I think it's awesome, and I've said it before, when this started going down. We need to get it in the paper, we need to impress, it's something to brag about, I mean, there's not many schools that do it, there's not many people in the county that do it, and it's something we need to get out there.
I will also say that we had Union City in Winchester, they came and visited on Friday. And, um, I got an email from Union City today, and it was forged from a girl that sent it to, um, their counselor that said, I went and visited Monroe Central, and that lady. Told me that she would come back to, she'll come to Union City in September, no, sorry, not September, in, after spring break, and I'm doing that program, you let her know that, so, I mean.
I do wanna let you know that regionally, I lead our childcare efforts here in the county, but I'm part of a regional coalition, and regionally. People are looking at Monroe Central to see how you, how they're figuring it out, um, and we're hosting our second regional training for early learning providers tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Uh, all the nights are around again, but, um, so Monroe Central, regionally, not just with schools. But other providers are looking to this district to say, hey, what are they doing? Um, so Monroe Central is something that I speak about very frequently in those, um, meetings, because not only have you guys stepped into a space that. Is a little bit unconventional, a lot of schools are offering pre-K, but when it comes to childcare, um, a lot of schools are, that, that's not our business, right? Um, but with childcare kind of taking a major hit this year, and a lot of them are closing, and we're seeing some kids going to some unsafe places. Um, other unconventional places are looking at how do we provide safe care, and Monroe Central is one that gets brought up very frequently. So, um, even though you don't know it, there are eyes watching, and there are people that are curious, um, and a big portion of that is because Anne. Is such a great collaborator, but then that workforce development piece that is happening with RAS thirty-two, um, people are looking at that, and so this is. What's happening here in this building with childcare and early education is huge regionally, so just, um, just know that too.
I think that, I'm, you know, I'm saying, put it in the paper, I can't imagine being a parent living in Muncie and knowing that, and knowing, cause that's gotta be your biggest concern, is daycare. And knowing that, hey, if I moved out that way, I'd drive right by there and get out of Muncie City Schools, and they're doing better, but I'm just saying, in general, in general, I'm saying.
Better is a, is a fun work.
Problem is now we gotta have some help, I mean, that's the biggest problem, but maybe it'll all flow together, so.
Anne can put up a couple of communities, a hundred thousand dollars.
Row houses, I really need to those row houses.
Always good to prove that, uh, Douggy Downer won too.
Great. My philosophy.
All right, that is all for this evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you, folks.